Good evening. It's seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Bailey, would you take the roll, please?
Commissioner Black.
Here.
Commissioner Batty.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Keen.
Here.
Commissioner Langness.
Present.
And Commissioner Gerard.
Here. We ask if you're able to please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair is looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So move.
Second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Chair is looking for a motion to approve the planning commission meeting minutes from July 11th, 2018.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and second and discussion. I have two corrections.
Mr. Chair. Oh, you got the correction. I'm sorry, I have a correction, I think. On item seven, letter B of the draft plan. Donovan, I thought we talked about changing the low density to one in four units per acre. And then it says, after that, instead of five homes, and shouldn't it say one to four units per acre versus one to three units per acre?
Um, yeah, we did, yeah, I think we, yeah, I wrote down my notes, headed to one to four.
Yeah, for some reason on the minutes, it shows, in the, in the, on letter B, it says, "Family low-density residential districts to be one to four units per acre instead of five homes in order to bring the lot size down." I think that needs to be changed.
Okay.
Just the clarification.
The current density is one in three.
Correct.
I think omitting the, um, five homes makes it correct.
Part of the comp plan.
Correct.
Also, a correction on page one, on the amount of cubic yard removal. I know it's more than 145. I think there's supposed to be three zeros after that potentially. I don't remember what the number is, so if you could just get it corrected to what the number is.
Will do.
Thank you. Any other corrections? Hearing none. All, oh, here.
I think we need to amend the motion, though, to reflect those corrections.
I'll, I'll agree.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We have one item on the agenda tonight. A conditional use permit amendment for Lakes International Language Academy, 195-0. Make sure I was awake, Mike?
No, I just fell over.
Fenway Avenue. First off, we'd like to welcome all of the public here tonight. We rarely get such a large audience. We're up there taking pictures of the audience, so thank you all for coming. So the way this will work this evening is Donovan will present the application as they understand it. This is a matter that was tabled about a month ago, so we'll be reviewing some of the more pertinent facts related to that. We will then ask the city if we had, commissioners will then ask the city if we have any questions. We'll ask the applicant then if they wish to speak. We may have a couple of questions for the applicant. This is not a public hearing, but as we announced at the last meeting, we will take public comment, and there's a legal difference there, but you don't have to worry about it. I'll go through a little bit of instructions at that point for anyone who wants to speak. So with that, Donovan, I believe you're presenting.
Certainly, thank you, sir. Yeah, as noted, this application was tabled from the June 27th meeting in order to gain some more information and answer some commissioner questions, also some other issues that were raised during the public testimony. The Lila school is located on, you know, on Fenway, of course. I just want to note, one of the things that came up was the direction of stormwater and where it goes after it leaves the site. And that these brown lines represent storm sewer lines, public lines, and they run to the storm sewer, to the northwest of the project. The, as I filed up in the staff report, there were some questions regarding what were the required, some requirements for the Lila school when it was originally approved, number of trees, fencing. And there was a planting plan that the city did sign off on. It was completed, they, they, there was a project release indicating that there were all the required trees were planted as part of the landscaping plan. There was no fence required as part of the original approval or any other ball fields or athletic fields. The, the, you know, project architect did go out to the site and note that about a third of the north property line is already fenced, and also provided some, some photos of the existing trees. This application now does not include signage on the, the north elevation. Also, another issue that was, question that was raised regarded the park dedication fees. And city records indicate that almost $25,000 was paid during the original development approval in park, parkland dedication fees. The, following the last meeting, the project team and Lila administrators met with city staff, and we reviewed some of the concerns. And the, from that conversation, the, the, the project team has developed a circulation plan that has been reviewed by the, the city engineer, and also they've provided extensive feedback to the engineer comment letter. I'd like to explain some of the, some of the assumptions on the circulation plan. We have the traffic, basically about 85% of the traffic entering off of Fenway, with the remaining 15 off the existing Farnham Avenue entrance. And then there's the location of three Lila staff members with flags to direct and also to speed, speed the vehicles as they come, go through the drop-off or pickup. And also, there is a, basically bus-only entrance here during those peak times, entering from Farnham and then, of course, leaving off of Fenway. They propose, Lila proposed a sign, similar to the sign that we see at the high school, that dedicates that simply for buses during those peak periods. And then, also, we talked about what would be, what's more, more finely detailed instructions for Lila, which are included in your staff packet that, from the city engineer, that the, requires three flaggers. And then also, you know, what, you know, what, what actions will be taken by, by Lila, you know, if there is an issue with Headwaters traffic or Farnham Road traffic. Which is rather detailed and lays out a variety of options, including neighborhood meetings, you know, student driver parents, education, and all the way up to, you know, installing signs, not allowing parking during school hours on the public, nearby public streets. And so at this point, I'd like to take any questions from the planning commission.
Commissioners, any questions? Gary?
Donovan, a couple of the most serious situations that were brought up at the last one was, was the kids running through the yards of the neighboring community. Now, you're showing some fencing, like a third of it being fenced, and a lot of landscaping, but that doesn't prevent the kids from running through that area. I mean, how is that addressed, actually?
Well, I think actually there's something of a structural change that'll occur, that Farnham will be constructed this fall. And so that really removes, you know, the incentive to cut through here, and there'll be a sidewalk for students to walk all the way down here. There'll be, you know, this'll be a construction area for homes here. This is Headwater, the site of Headwaters 11th. But is there any other, is there a particular place that you're concerned about as far as, that wouldn't be addressed by having a shorter distance here for students, or is, are you thinking of students coming from another direction?
Well, yeah, not, not necessarily, except that, that the landscaping that's there certainly isn't going to prevent somebody from walking through there. And if that walks through people's yards, that was, that was a serious concern. The other concern was the opening of Farnham on that, at that end. Is there, is there a timeline when that will be opened, or is that three, four, or five years from now, or is that, can be that, can that be kept closed until something else happens?
Well, no, as part of that development approval, and as far, as far as dating back to when this subdivision was created, which I believe is around perhaps '02, that's been intended to be a road. And, you know, there's always, it's always known that there would be additional, you know, development south of there. And right now, I mean, the road will be constructed this fall, and I expect it'll be opened, you know, after, after construction, after the main, you know, vehicle, construction vehicle traffic is gone, it will become a road as it's always been intended.
Gee, I thought that was not going to be opened until that area was developed, was about the 11th addition, or I forget what that's called, but...
Yeah, this will be developed.
But that, will that be opened prior to there being housing along that 11th addition?
They, most likely, given the construction, it'll, well, depends how quickly the infrastructure is created, but they'll be open for lots. I don't know if, if the developer has sold the lot yet, but there may be some new foundations there. They might be able to get some foundations in before, you know, the construction season for doing foundations ends in the, in the fall.
But you're expecting that that road will be completed this summer?
In the, yeah, in the fall, yes.
And, and it will be opened at that time?
It'll be open for snow plowing.
Okay.
Other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I, I have questions related to traffic circulation and parking, but I think we'll let the applicants talk first, and then I can ask those later.
Any other questions? Hearing none, would you, I'd kind of like to say a few words.
Hi, Cam Hedlund, Executive Director, at Lakes International. We're pleased to be back. We met, as Donovan said, with the city and with Ryan, and we're fully prepared to implement all the procedures that he has suggested and put in place, and the checks to check to see how it's working. I, I know that Joe, our engineer, would like to say a few words, and so I'll just let him explain a little more.
Thank you, Cam. Thank you, members of the planning commission. So I have three main points to make tonight. They address some of the concerns from the last meeting, and those are parking, the Farnham connection, and the internal circulation. So hopefully I address some of these questions before they're even answered or asked. So the first one is the parking at the school. This was raised in a couple of the questions that Ryan made, the city engineer made. And first off, that all parking requirements are satisfied with the proposed project. Student parking was one that was brought up. Because of it being a high school, there will be student drivers, and we have had the conversations with Lila staff of what the options are when that's in place, whether that be a lottery system or capping parking. And we've developed with the city engineer probably five or six steps of going through with parents to address not parking on state streets, all the way to posting no parking signs. So we do not see that as being an issue in the future. The school does want to keep that dialogue open with homeowners along Farnham and with the city. The second one, the Farnham connection, that as Donovan was saying, that will be in this fall. This will be addressed for cut-through traffic by only allowing bus traffic at that Farnham access during school hours. So for traffic to want to use that Farnham connection, they'll, A, either have to be in that south lot, and then exit the south lot in a very backwards manner to then go up Farnham instead of just coming out onto Headwaters and then Fenway. And with that kind of backwards route, we only project about 10 to 20 vehicles to make that movement. So very light traffic going up through that neighborhood, contrary to the thoughts from last meeting. We did run models to kind of project that, and we do feel comfortable with kind of that max of 20 vehicles at the most during that peak hour going through that neighborhood. And third, it really isn't a part of this study whether that connection is made, as Donovan stated. That connection will be made in the fall, so it really wasn't part of our study. So a third point was the internal connection, or internal circulation, the internal connection on site. We have run traffic models that looked at the full build condition with the phase two of the traffic study, and there will be no queuing impacts caused by the internal circulation to the roadways in the area. We will have Lila staff on site, as Cam was stating, with the three Lila staff, one at the entrance dividing up traffic to the two pickup and drop-off areas, and then two at each location making sure that kids are picked up or dropped off, and then traffic is still moving instead of vehicles sitting there. And finally, all of the city roads in the area are expected to operate a level service C or better. That is an acceptable level. We don't see major delays at any of the intersections on Fenway, Headwaters, or Farnham. And that is, to the city, acceptable conditions. So at that time, I'll open it up for any detailed traffic questions from the board.
Sure, here I go.
I was expecting it.
Donovan, excuse me one second, can you pull up the circulation map so we're all looking at the same thing here?
That'd be helpful, that's great.
Excuse the interruption.
And, and my concerns here with the expansion of the school is the impact on the neighborhood. And I, I'm just particularly sensitive or concerned about traffic on, on Farnham and how it affects the adjacent property owners. So here we go. Let's talk about traffic, I mean, about parking. How many new parking spaces are we going to have in there? And how many are there today, and how many new are we adding? Mr. Batty might know that, the answer to that.
Well, it's 110, and there's about, is it 122 or 125?
So we've got about 235 total spaces?
Yes.
That will be on site?
Right.
And...
That's about 20 more than what the code, the zoning code would require.
And how are we calculating that, though? I know we require three per classroom, and there's 38 classrooms, so that's 114. And I'm not...
It's in the original, it's in the original packet for last, but there's two components. There's the one you just mentioned, plus you have to provide a certain number, per number of senior high students.
Right, right.
It's one per every four students.
One per every four. That's, I'm leading into my next question. How many senior high students are we anticipating over the next three or four years?
Yep. At the start, there will be low numbers because most of them will be middle school, but at kind of that full build, they, I believe, we're estimating between 90 and 110 per like 10th, 11th, and 12th.
That'd be another 25 parking spaces, give or take.
Yep.
So...
Per each grade, so 75.
Well, I think the...
Is it just seniors?
I think the added one per four student is for the anticipated drivers, not for all students, is it?
It just, the way the zoning code's written, it just, it says for high schools, so...
Yeah.
It assume, I mean, you know, we're not assuming ninth graders are learning to drive, but figuring that the way it averages out, that, so it doesn't distinguish, you know, driving age, just high school.
So, so staff feels confident that the 235 parking spaces are adequate to meet the demands of the school?
Yeah, yeah, we, actually, for the requirement, there were 27 over the required number.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Okay.
Let's go to, let's, let's go to the next item, which was the Farnham connection.
Yep.
Let's just briefly talk about that. I'll first say I'm a little disappointed that we can't keep all traffic off of Farnham. I wish we could keep the buses off of Farnham, but I think the effort made is, is very good of the school to come up with the plan that they have, and I think we're, we're going in the right direction. Is, is the entrance off of Farnham for buses, is that going to be, is that going to be labeled or marked a one-way?
It will be buses only during the AM and PM hours.
Right.
So traffic will not be able to enter from either direction except for buses. And buses will only use a one-way route during those times.
Will it be a one-way? Will it be a one-way driveway is what I'm asking?
We were discussing that with the city engineer, and we decided that if it is a problem, we could post it as one-way if there was cut-through traffic during the off-peak times.
And the school is willing to, to take that step if, if it is a problem?
Yes.
Okay. Then let's look at the north end of the parking lot and the circulation. You've got 90-degree parking on the north end of the building. So you've got two-way traffic there. Where is it, is it, so that two-way traffic, people leaving there could go out to Farnham?
Not during the peak times, because there will be a buses-only sign parked, passed, or posted there, too. So they will just be conflicting with the six buses dropping kids off in the morning.
But during off-hours, and, and when you say buses, you were talking peak AM?
Yep.
PM, afternoon?
Yep.
Peak movement. All other movements, people can use that driveway and, and go on to Farnham, right?
And as we were just saying, if that does become a problem, where people are trying to take Farnham as a shortcut, we'll then post it one-way to address that.
Well, I like to stop problems before they're a problem, you know?
We, we don't see it as a problem. We see just peak movements, why someone would want to take a shortcut in or out of the parking lot. For non-peak times, there's going to be absolutely no internal queuing, so that you can get right out onto Fenway, make your U-turn at the roundabout, and either go to 61 or 97 a lot faster than the cut-through.
When you run your errands, you want to get from point A to point B, sometimes you anticipate traffic or anticipate problems, and you, you take the shortest route, don't you? I do.
Yep. And the shortest time route to 97 would be still through Fenway from the site. That's what we did look at in detail for the traffic study.
Okay, let me continue my questions, all right? On, as you enter off of, off of Headwaters and come into the site, you have to veer to the right because you're angle parking. I think you've got, what, 60-degree angle parking in there, or is it?
Yep.
Yeah. Are there, is that going to be signed? Will there be signs there to note, now, now we are into one-way traffic there?
Yep, we will be looking at putting in either striping or signage to make that apparent.
Then, as you go to the north and, and take your right and go out onto Fenway, that's a right-out only?
Correct.
Do we look at possibly making that a right-in, right-out only? I mean, what, what, what would that hurt?
So it would be kind of the circulation, the conflicts with traffic coming in, too. Then you would have that conflict with traffic both coming in and out there, and you'd have a little bit of the crossing with the buses. Also, they didn't want a full access on Fenway in our initial talks with the city. They wanted to keep that as a reduced access, either the, the right-out, had the least impact on Fenway operations. And because we do have that right-in now off of Headwaters, it made sense with site circulation to just keep it the right-out. But that, that was one of our initial talks, was can we make this a right-in, right-out as well? And the right-out ended up scoring better as far as operations.
I think my last question has to do with the queuing and entering the site off of Headwaters. The city engineer was concerned about the backup, potential backup of traffic at, at drop-off hours, morning in particular. Your study and your calculations indicate that you don't see that as an issue, where we would have queuing coming out onto Headwaters, people backing up, I mean, the traffic backing up so that they're waiting in line, if you would, to drop your, your child off at school?
There was no, no standing queue that made it back from the internal circulation to Headwaters in any of the modeling. So it'll just be people slowing down to make that right turn movement. There won't be any stoppages in the site that will be backing up onto Headwaters with the appropriate traffic control with the Lila staff.
Well, I, I thank you for your attention. I think you guys did a great job addressing the issues that we were asking about. I, again, am just concerned about the amount of traffic on the Farnham.
Okay. Thank you for the questions.
Any other questions?
I won't go too far.
Well, thank you very much.
So we legally had the public hearing a month ago, so that's a requirement for when you want to do an amendment change to a CUP. At the same time, we were asked if we would take public comment when we resumed after we had the new information, and we said, yes, we would. So we'll run it similar to a public hearing. We'll open it to anyone who wants to address the issue. The police come up, state your name and address for the record. We ask that you keep it brief, and we will wait for all people who wish to address are done, and then we will close it, for lack of a better term, and then it'll come back to the commissioners for a decision. So with that, if anyone would like to make public comment, we ask you to please come up, state your name and address for the record.
Nick Halverson. Address?
Yeah, just please.
1759 Valerie Lane in New Brighton. 55112. So in terms of Lila, we drive every day, and we're looking at a busing, actually, to get that, but the, I, I want the, the commission to know, we, I live in the Mountsview School District, which is arguably the best in the state with two top 15 high schools, according to US News and World Report. And we choose to drive, by we, I mean myself, or my wife, or my parents, two children, my son and my daughter, to, to Lakes International because of the world, yours, this is a world-class institution. And we are thrilled for the opportunity, potential opportunity, to be able to have a world-class high school. So for some of us that don't unfortunately live in that, in the neighborhood, and that's because my wife's a nuclear pharmacist and has to live near the city, so we, we, I'm, I'm an Ivy League educated businessman, that, that economics major, that loves Lila, and we hope that this plan is approved so we can continue to have some of the best education in the whole state. Thanks.
Hello, my name's Aaron Meyer. Live at seven-three-six-three, two-hundred-and-thirty-third Street North, um, almost two years now, and my son will be going into fifth grade. I've been commuting from the very cusp of Forest Lake District, albeit I didn't even realize that I was in the district. I lived in Lionel Lakes, off of twenty-three and, which is Lake Drive and thirty-five W. Pretty far away, been driving there for years. Continue to drive them as I moved up here, right around the corner. Love how quick it is to get in and out right now, and quite frankly, the number-one ninety percent reason that I live in the city of Forest Lake is Lila. I moved here for my son, I moved here for the school, um, with the intent that they were going to expand, build the school. I kinda interviewed them and chose the school because of that reason. I wanna keep him in Lila. If there wasn't room in the school, quite frankly, I'd probably move, and I did not move here for the school district, unfortunately. The community, as a lot of people know, in general, don't support the school district like they should, in my opinion. It's greatly my opinion, a lot of people I talk to. There's been a lot of things that have been, um, voted against, and hopefully that turns around for the other schools, but, uh, my fiance, who is my son's stepmom, has joined the Lila Foundation Board. We raise funds, we are very active in the community, very active in the school, and it would be, quite frankly, a shame if this didn't go through. That's my two cents. Thanks.
I'm Jen Mardonis. I live at seven-four-four-six, North Shore Trail North in Forest Lake. My husband and my kids and I moved up here from St. Paul, um, three years ago. We came up for the lake, um, we stay for the school, we stay for Lila. Um, it's, Lila is the gem of Forest Lake. Besides the lake, it is the gem of Forest Lake. People come from all over to go to the school. I work with two other families in Arden Hills that live around that area that drive up here to go to Lila, and, um, it's just, it's just a gem. When we moved here, I didn't know about Lila, and Forest Lake is pretty small, and I, coming from St. Paul, it was a little small for me at first, but what I just, Lila just brings the diversity that the city, um, that all cities need. The, it's, it's just, makes me so proud to live here, and I think you should support this. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Randy Bergman, fifty-one-eleven, two-oh-seven Street North, uh, right here in Forest Lake, right by the airport, so I'm really familiar with the roads. I have three daughters that all, um, attended or attend Lakes International, two at the high school right now. All, two, two of them are completely, completely fluent in Spanish. That's been wonderful for my family since we have relatives in Mexico. It's been wonderful in many ways for them to be able to be, participate in mission trips and speak in other languages, so, um, Lila's been a tremendous, um, asset in our, in our family and, and in my children's career pathways. One of them is interested in the United States Air Force as a linguist, which she'll be able to qualify because she attended Lakes International Language Academy since kindergarten to join her family tradition from grandparents to her father, who wrote, wrote, raised their hand and said they would serve the United States in the armed services. So, I asked, um, this commission to approve the ex- the expansion and building of Lakes International right in its location, which is well-protected with the roundabout and with, in the YMCA. Thank you.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity to let us speak. My name is Wendy Novak. My address is one-seven-zero-one-one, Vassar Street Northeast, Forest Lake, Minnesota. In nineteen-seventy-seven, my husband's family relocated here and started the dealership, which is now the Whittaker Dealership. Really proud of that business, created a lot of jobs for families. We also own the Abra Building in Forest Lake, really proud of that business. They were founding members of Maskers Community Theater, super proud of that. But the thing I'm most proud of is Lila. The fact that Forest Lake has a, an international back, you know, this incredible school, this gem, as people have shared with you. Regarding the traffic, I know that a few years ago, Shannon, I think there was a study done on how well Lila moved traffic in the lower school. If there's a problem, Shannon and Cam reach out to the community of parents, as seen here tonight, and we, we work together to fix those issues. So, please, keep the school here. It's beautiful, it's wonderful, it's something we're all proud of.
Hi, I am Kelly Tyler, and I live at one-nine-nine-zero-two Farnham Road North, uh, right down the street from the school. Uh, my husband and I actually bought our house, um, because three of our kids, uh, go to Lila, and we wanted to be in this neighborhood, um, anticipating the growth of the school. Our oldest is in fifth grade, and we have seen, uh, the school grow just in those five or six years that we've been with Lila, and it's amazing, and we are excited for our younger ones to be there, and like I said, we purposely moved into this neighborhood knowing that this was coming. Um, we can see it from all of our windows, so it's wonderful. Obviously, I have concerns about the street parking, um, and the, the bus traffic past our house, any parent would, um, but I know just from our experience with the school that communication is amazing, and, uh, signage and teachers directing traffic and directing parents where to go has always been wonderful, so I'm not concerned, and I know that they will handle it.
Hello, thanks for having us. I'm Jill Munson, fifteen years in Forest Lake. We're at two-zero-eight-one-zero, Ingersoll Avenue North in Forest Lake. Um, I wanted to stay practical because you had very practical concerns, and you were kind of, I think you've probably done this before, and seen what's on paper translate into the real world with cars and three-year-olds wandering around. So, I, what I would say on a practical level is we have young people who come over as language ambassadors from Spain, from South America, in Minnesota winters, standing out there in their little borrowed parkas with their flags, getting people all around. It's really quite amazing the manpower that our school is able to round up all days, every single day of the year. Cam's, Cam's limping around on a sore hip. I've seen you, I'm a physical therapist. So, um, in the parking lot, every single morning, getting those kids funneled off the buses safely, managing the flow of traffic, keeping people going, and if there's something that's not going well, like, like the last speaker had said, Shannon emails the parents and says, hey, guys, alright, we've gotta address this issue. You, we can't park here on this night. Let's use a shuttle bus from the community parking lot and shuttle people over for school events. Um, and so there's a great response in the school. Our kids started taking the bus because we had bus buddies. How many Lila parents have gone and done the first week of bus duty so that kids aren't afraid about taking the bus? And I tell you what, I'd be afraid to take that bus system. I helped out with the buses in the first week of school, and I was run- sprinting around like, come on, children, find your way, and they figure it out because all of the parents and the teachers who go to the high school with these teen-tiny little ones to make sure they figure out how to navigate the bus system. So there is a wholehearted commitment to learning, to getting our community at our school to maximize traffic flow for those practical concerns, which I totally appreciate. So, um, I think they're realistic, but I think our school is actually really capable of managing them.
Hi, I'm Melissa Nevertill. I live at two-five-two-nine-six, Grizzly Court in Wyoming. Uh, only reason we're in Wyoming is because there wasn't a house in Forest Lake at the time that we moved up here. We moved from Centerville, and we did move for the school again. I have been a volunteer at Lila, I've been a substitute teacher, I've been a school board member, I've been a foundation member, and now I'm actually a part-time teacher there too. Their whole community is just infectious. It's a wonderful thing to have in Forest Lake, and to have it not stop at sixth grade and continue through the high school, I think is nothing but a benefit for Forest Lake, so, thank you.
Hi, I'm Heather O'Meara, ten-ninety-four Bay Drive Southeast, Forest Lake, five-five-oh-two-five. Um, I wear two different hats, that of a parent and that of an experienced high school teacher. So I wanted to speak to the caliber of the students at Lila, um, wearing both of those hats. So, first, as a parent, when I was deciding where to send my children, I have two children, both who attend Lila, when I was picking the school district that I was gonna have them attend, I actually called up the principal of Southwest Junior High, which is where the Lila, uh, students who graduated from sixth grade would go on there, uh, for seventh and eighth grade, because we did not have Headwaters yet. And I called him up and I asked, I said, how do the Lila kids compare with the other kids at Southwest? Point-blank, just tell me good and bad and ugly, tell me everything, and he had absolutely glowing reviews. He basically said, I wish all of the kids acted with the respect and courtesy that the Lila kids do. And this isn't to bash any of the other kids, this is just to say that the caliber of IB students is one notch higher when it comes to character and responsibility, and so that made me decide to send my kids there. The other hat that I wear is that of a teacher. I taught in St. Paul High School for ten years, excuse me, and I substitute teach here both in the Forest Lake District and in the Lila, uh, schools. And I can honestly say, I'm very strict as a sub. I demand commit, complete respect from the moment I walk in the room, and I get that from the Lila students. You can hear a pin drop. If I ask them to be quiet, they are quiet. So, they have, they've had these IB attributes drilled into them. Why, I shouldn't say drilled, but. They've had them, um, for a long time. They have respect and character and empathy and responsibility, and they've, they've learned these, and they emulate these in their everyday lives, whether they're at school or not. So, when you're, I hear the community's concerns about traffic or students running through yards. However, I firmly believe that if we ask the Lila students, if we say, do not park on the streets, or do not run through the yards, that unlike, alright, I shouldn't say unlike other students, but, or other schools, but the Lila students have the ability to regulate themselves with a higher level of standard than what most people are used to. I do not see any issues with parking, traffic, running through yards at all. I think that the students will be incredibly behaved, um, they will be well-respected community members, and they will be an asset to those that live there rather than a detriment, so, that's it.
See, no one else come forward. We'll thank everyone for their public comments, and we'll bring it back to the commission for a decision. Commissioners? Mr. Chairman, I have one more question, and I, I don't, this one might be on the edge of being a little picky. Really, Mike?
Really.
The, i- it has to do with the trash location and the trash enclosure. Um, the trash location, I believe, um, can we move, can you show us where that's gonna be? It's right, right in there, right in there, and the actual size of that really isn't drawn on the, on the exhibit there. I, number one, I don't want it to interfere with traffic circulation. Um, that's number one, that's pretty obvious. And number two, I wish we could come up with a little bit better plan for the screening of it. You're, you're talking about, uh, a chain-link fence, and I don't know how the rest of the commission feels, but you're talking about a chain-link fence and then having a natural, uh, uh, vine growth, uh, green growing on the fence for screening, um, isn't really gonna help in the wintertime. I, I, I don't know how good that's gonna look, and I, I'd prefer to have, uh, material, a little bit heavier material matching the exterior of the building to, uh, to screen that, uh, trash enclosure and, and, uh, and to take care of it that way. Sorry to be picky. That's why we're here. Kevin?
Yeah, I think, uh, I think, uh, I agree, and, and that's one of our recent discussion points was, you know, um, we have, you see, have to have a trash enclosure, and, and obviously a natural vine and a natural look on it is, is wonderful when it's nice out, but as soon as it gets cold in winter, uh, all you're gonna see then is the chain-link fence and then the, the, the trash, uh, cans inside there, the, the dumpsters, and, and we would, I, I personally would like to see that more enclosed with maybe, uh, a stone that matches the building as well, and if you wanna put your vines over the stone, they'll grow as well too, uh, but at least then in the wintertime, you would see right in there.
Mike?
I, I agree. We've, uh, we've kinda discussed this, and what they said, uh, I agree, as far as in the wintertime, it's gonna be just empty vines. You'll be able to see the enclosures, the cardboard boxes or whatever else, any else, anything else out there that's, uh, for storage or garbage or trash. These vines will climb either a wooden enclosure, a concrete enclosure, uh, steel, you know, anything you want, uh, so it'll look really nice six months out of the year. The other six months of the year, you're still gonna have the, the, the enclosure behind it. It is in a high-visibility area. It's on the corner right there by the roundabout, so it's gonna be seen quite a bit. Uh, I would like to see something else there with the vines on it too. That'd be nice in the, uh, six months out of the year.
Gary, I'm sorry, yeah?
Couple of things. Number one, I, I think that we should applaud the support that the community gives to Lila. I think that's extremely positive, that it's, it's really rare that we see this kind of support for any kind of a organization within Forest Lake, and, and not to be picky, but it would be interesting to see if this was a public school request, if there would be the same support, so I really congratulate you for coming and doing this. But I have a, I have a kind of an opposite approach to, to the parking, um, and I, I don't know if the, if the parking is planned to be, uh, used as a staged portion, that, that you have, um, you know, a hundred students this year and two-hundred next year and two-hundred the ne- the, I, I don't know if that's what the plan is, but my point would be that is it possible that the parking lots, the asphalt portion of it, could be done in the same stages as the need for the parking? With the idea that we don't have impervious surface sooner than we need it, so that the grass is left as long as it could be left, and then the parking lots could be expanded as they're needed, as opposed to building a big parking lot that's only half-used for two or three or four or five years, and I don't know if that's realistic or not, but. I'd like, I, I don't like the idea of, of having asphalt where you could leave grass.
Dennis?
Dennis Batty, twenty-two-seven-seven-zero Imperial Avenue, North Forest Lake, Minnesota. Architect present, uh, representing, uh, Lila. Couple things. Uh, first of all, in regard to the parking, just to put in scope what, uh, Gary just talked about here. It would be approximately the row, the outside row of parking, twenty-seven, this, the additional spaces that were providing beyond what the, the zoning ordinance requires, uh, would essentially be that outside row of cars there, just to, it might be off one or two, but, but magnitude-wise, that's what we're talking about. And, you know, we, we just, we just simply tried to strike a balance on that based on what, uh, we thought, you know, what we knew the parking re- needs were now, and tried to project those, those forward. I, I certainly don't, I don't think the school would have any problem, you know, if you, I mean, obviously, we've established proof of parking here, there's plenty of space to do it, uh, you know, if that became a, a requirement, I don't, I don't think anybody would raise an issue over that. Uh, in regard to the, um, the trash enclosure, you know, I, I think all of us would like it to be someplace else, but the problem is, there's two problems. One is the kitchen is on the east end of the building, and the trash enclosure, to make the most sense, needs to be adjacent to the, uh, the trash enclosure needs to be adjacent to the kitchen. We put it out there be- uh, because we felt like it, uh, was prob- probably the easiest, the, the best balance between access from the kitchen and the ease of getting the garbage trucks in there to pick up the garbage. Uh, again, if, if the, uh, if the, uh, desire of the commission would be to, to put some kind of, you know, less, um, you know, more opaque type of enclosure around that, I mean, we can do that. That's not a, that's not a huge deal. I just wanted, um, to have something other than, you know, either a wood or a I just wanted to have something other than, you know, either a wood or a masonry box, you know, sitting out there, because it was sitting right, you know, essentially out in, in front. We agonized over, you know, other locations on the site, but we felt, felt that this was the best balance and, and offering to, you know, to surround it with landscaping. Again, the enclosure, in my mind, is not a, is not a huge deal.
Other comments?
I would make a motion that we approve the request with the condition that the garbage outlet be looked at to protect, or, I don't know what you wanna say on, but I, I think other than a, other than a chain link fence.
Standard enclosure.
Kind of a block, matching the building type of an enclosure.
Like a year-round enclosure. That'd be condition eight then, out of staff recommendations. Have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and a discussion. Eric?
I wanted to get the commission's feel on converting the easternmost strip of that parking lot to be a proof of parking versus built out at construction.
Can you repeat that, please?
I, I wanted to get the, the commission's feel on the easternmost part of that, that strip, those roughly twenty-seven spots, if we should convert that to proof of parking versus forced at construction.
Well, I assume the parking has curbing around it. Is that, does it?
I, I assume so, yes.
And if you put curbing, you know, I, I don't, the economics are there that you might as well put the parking, parking in. I mean, to add the parking later is gonna be a big cost to the school, to have a contractor come in and set the grade and, and add the blacktopping, you might as well just do it right now and it's, it's done and it's in, you know.
I'm with Mike. I think that we blacktopped the whole thing. Any other discussion? Harry, none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. So what happens now is that the planning commission is the final decision on this application, with the exception that if someone is opposed to the decision we made, they have one week to write a letter to the city stating why they are opposed to the decision the planning commission made, and then the city council will review our decision. If no one puts a letter forth, then it, it passes tonight. So, we wish you all the best. We want, again, as Gary said, we wanna thank everyone. We rarely get such enthusiastic crowd at the planning commission, so thank you all for participating this evening. Now, as always, we move to... You're welcome. Come on.
Of course.
We have, we have moved to the riveting part of the other. Commissioners, anything on the other?
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I would like to ask is that, that I'm frustrated because I get so many questions about a particular CUP that is not being followed, that I'm wondering if there's a way, you know, when we, when we approve these things, it doesn't seem to be a follow-up that they follow what we say. And I'm wondering if, if, and probably everybody knows what I'm talking about, but, but, you know, there's a, there's a frustration amongst the community, and, and I'm tired of being asked about it.
Certainly. What's going on is that staff is basically preparing protocol on how to, how to follow up with these, so that we, you know, if, if we receive complaints on one, that we treat all of them equally, you know, we pursue the same process through them.
And they're, and are the, the CUPs are reviewed on a complaint basis in, in a sense, right?
That's, yeah, that's the kind of, become unwritten policy. I mean, many of them do contain that, will be reviewed annually, you know, condition of approval, but, you know, we don't receive complaints on many of them. I mean, there's about, I think, I counted ninety-three existing in the city, and we, you know, we do not, the overall, overwhelming majority of them do not receive, you know, do not produce any complaints.
And I suppose the most visible ones are the ones that get the complaints, if there are any, you know, and those are the ones that, but you don't have any recourse, it doesn't seem like.
There is a whole, you know, CUP revocation process, but at this point, we wanna make sure that, you know, what we, what we're doing is following something we can follow for each, for each one of these complaints, you know, each, each individual CUP.
Just a question for staff. I, I saw that we had three emails, and I was able to read them before the meeting tonight. Two were sent from members of the public today and one was yesterday. Can we, can I request staff to have those forwarded to us when received, so that we can read them in advance of the meeting? Or can we, I know, like, the city council members have an email address on the city's website where people can email them directly, that we can get those from the public directly?
Yeah, we can, I mean, the main thing is if we, you know, send the email out, that we don't get, you know, discussion about the, the, the application prior to the meeting. On occasion, I have sent out, you know, those, but I do wanna make sure that, you know, we do, you know, I think it's, it's Bailey's motion here, we should check on that, or maybe, you know, maybe there's an option to do a, an email. But in some ways, we wanna, in some ways, it's not have you direct, you know, communication, like, there was a request for your emails, email addresses, just so that you don't become inundated and, you know, that the, the real conversation occurs here and the real fact-finding, 'cause we don't wanna have...
Well, we could certainly have communication with any member of the public, it's just that we can't have communication amongst quorums of the body itself. So I don't think there's a legal issue in forwarding those, as long as we're not hitting reply all, and all the other commissioners are seeing whatever that context is.
Correct, right.
Yeah, I think we have to be careful of the open meeting laws, but that shouldn't, doesn't solve the problem.
But, but also, do we want everybody in town sending us stuff every day through our own personal email?
I'm perfectly okay with that.
We have one.
Well, everything is intended to be funneled through the city. I mean, the, the, the communication goes to you, or Bailey, and then to the commission, right? We don't, commissioner's commissioner, we don't do that anymore.
Yeah, well, the, I mean, the main thing is that, that, you know, each commissioner has, has the same, same fact set in which they're, they're basing that information. I mean, obviously, you might have other conversations with, with residents and have different experiences or knowledge about different applications, but to the extent we can, we try to, you know, have you have a, you know, a packet contains the information, or, you know, that you'll be making, you'll be judge, you'll be making your decision, decision on.
Donovan, do you have anything for us this evening?
I just wanna say that the city council, as passed Monday, did vote to authorize the draft comprehensive plan to be sent into the affected jurisdictions, you know, which are the adjacent jurisdictions, the Wausau District, school district, et cetera. And so that process is continuing, and it did include that note for the one to four, you know, range of density, for that low, medium density, future land use category.
What about the Parks Commission adjustments? How that, did you make those revisions before you submitted it to the council?
Yes.
Councilperson Bayne, anything?
Thank you, thank you for inviting all your friends here tonight.
I wore both a council member and a mom hat tonight. Just quick note to say thank you for all of the work on the comprehensive plan. As Donovan said, we did approve that to go on to adjoining cities for a future review, and so just, I know that's a lot of work on your part, so thank you for all of that work. Also, on the email question, I appreciate the desire to have the email, and I appreciate the desire to have that open dialogue to the public. I would just caution, if you provide it, they will use it. And so, think about the management of that and the communications that that requires, because again, if it's provided, it will be used, and then it's another tool to manage. But again, certainly your decision, and I would support you having those accounts if that was something you desired. I think it's something you should all have if you're going to have it, either one has it, or you all have it, but something to think about. Thank you. Anything else for me?
Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Anything else, Dennis?
Is, are there any workshops, combined workshops that are all planned here for, I, I was, I thought we had talked about the possibility of, of a, of a combined workshop to discuss the comprehensive plan. I know we had those, those meetings that included, you know, at least representatives from every group, but, I mean, is that part of the process, or is that, are we beyond that now?
I would, I would say we're beyond that, but, as Dan mentioned last, I believe, last meeting, there is some talk about having a joint planning commission meeting, perhaps with the EDA or council, to talk about the, the city-owned property south of Hedwars Parkway, about that future development, and some ideas of conceptual, conceptually laying that out to facilitate that development for, you know, for commercial development. So I can offer, I can offer that as a joint meeting.
I mean, I'm not looking for meetings just for the sake of meetings, but I, I, I'm particularly interested in this seeming, you know, and I don't, I'm not trying to be negative here, but this disconnect between, it's, seems like there, we kinda do our thing as the planning commission, the city council does theirs, and the EDA does what they do, and there just isn't a lot of cross-pollination here and discussion about these, and I, so that's one thing. The other thing is, just, you know, in, in two minutes, tell us what, what's left as far as the approval of the comprehensive plan.
Okay, so there's a six-month review period, and hopefully it doesn't take six months, but we have to hear, in one way, either comments, or no, we don't have comments, from about twelve different, twelve different affected jurisdictions they're referred to as. And then it comes back to the council, and I also, also with that, you know, I bring it back as a package where we have these review comments, and, you know, the city's required to address them, so we address them in some way. I mean, doesn't, we're not required to change them based on the comments, but simply to, to note that, yes, we received that comment, and, well, you might differ on a certain policy or a land use decision, well, that's our, you know, our, our choice is to, you know, follow this one goal, for instance. But then it comes back to council, and then they, then it's, then it actually then is authorized to be sent to Met Council, and Met Council does their review. After they do their review, then it comes back for formal adoption, and so...
Who does the formal adoption when it comes back from the Met Council? The council?
Council does, yes.
Okay, not the planning commission.
So it's just, it's just the city council that does that?
Correct.
Okay.
So is there a public, public hearing type of a situation that goes along with that, or how, how do they do that?
There's not a formal public hearing required. I mean, I think it might be a situation, if you wanna speak, you do the, you know, the open forum type, you know, discussion, you know, request to speak on that agenda item during a city council meeting.
Is there any, is there any possibility, and I, again, I don't mean it to sound negative, but that the, the city council could make substantive changes to the comp plan at this point forward, or is it basically, is it basically in its final form, except for dotting i's and crossing t's?
I think the latter, yes. We had done a long, you know, review period, we'd had, you know, twenty seventeen, this series of discussions and workshops, community survey, and we had some, you know, the open house events this year, community conversations, and, you know, underneath all this, you know, there's, there's, is a lot about the planning, is the planning, the infrastructure, you know, sizing pipes, creating a, a water and sewer plan that could provide, you know, what this build-out envisions, as far as, you know, additional, you know, that highway business area in the southwest, and, you know, additional, you know, density, residential density east of Highway sixty-one. And so anytime those, you know, the substantial changes suddenly has Ryan and his team scurrying back to resizing pipes and calculating, and it's really kind of a ripple effect, and so, of course, that gets expensive, but, you know, so right now, it's really, you know, the, the things we talked about, you know, increasing density, you know, working with some of those lot size, you know, essentially working with the lot sizes, you know, that's, you know, those, you know, there was, you know, I feel, you know, I, I felt strongly about that, as you did, that we need to make some corrections, especially with the downtown residential, residential density. But at this point, you know, what they, you know, proved for the jurisdiction, you know, intra-jurisdictional review is essentially the final plan.
Yeah, I would, I would just kind of, that was more informational than, than hoping it'd come off as being a criticism. I, I think the process, you know, it's, obviously, for those of us who have been involved in this for the first time, it's, it's been quite an education, you know, the process. It'd be interesting to see how this, this ripple effect, you know, how that comes to play, because it seems to me there's going to be a bunch of, I mean, there eventually will be quite a series here of ordinance changes, will there not, that will line our current city ordinances up to, to help facilitate the comp plan, you know, in being carried out? Am I right on that?
Oh, certainly, yeah. The Met Council gives municipalities nine months to get their local land use controls, the zoning ordinance, consistent with their comp plans that, that were recently adopted. So it's, it's gonna be a full...
It's gonna happen fairly quickly, though.
Yeah, and I've already have, you know, kinda...
It's not like the state legislature and...
Easy over there. Let's not go there, Dennis.
But, but in fact, this is a twenty forty plan, so are we expected to make ordinance changes in two thousand nineteen or eighteen to support the twenty forty plan? I mean, is that, is that ahead of the horse, or...
Pretty much, you get the nail on the head. We gotta line up with whatever...
Even though it's that long off.
Well, but you have to line up all of your changes to your land uses that you did in your area, and it's where it all comes in.
Yeah, perhaps one of the major changes will be the zoning map amendments. I mean, we'll have many areas, we'll have to rezone properties and make them consistent with the proposed land use map. Donovan, over the next six to eight months or a year, however it takes to do the final adoption of the comp plan, as applications come in, can we have a reference to the existing land use map as well as the proposed new future land use map, so, because there are quite a few changes? And as applications come in, just a reminder to us of, you know, what the existing land use map is and what the, what the proposed new land use map is going to be, so that we can have that as part of our discussion on, on land use applications. I think that'd be good to have over...
Yeah, I mean, I think with the proper caveat, that it's, you know, if it hasn't gotten fin, you know, adopted formally... fin, you know, adopted formally, that...
No, but we're going in that direction and we ought to be aware of that.
Donovan, do we have a meeting on the 8th of August?
We do, we will be, the city, the planning commission will be reviewing Headwaters Place final PUD amendment.
And lastly, my comment is, the gentleman who was astute enough to point out that with the temporary signs that arts in the park is violating, we are the number one guys that violating the public right away with the arts in the park. I happened to come through Tuesday about 6 o'clock, there had to be a half a dozen signs in the public right away. Three of them in the actual roundabout. So he was spot on, man. Anything else?
Loop to a journey.
Motion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you all.